Good evening. Say hello to all these happy faces.
Hello, Mark. Good evening.
Everybody always looks so happy on Zoom.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Mayor Morin and Chair Murphy, I do show at 5:00 PM if you'd like to call the meeting to order.
Yes, um, do we have all of our commissioners on as well?
I believe we are only missing Commissioner Rodriguez, and I do know that he will be absent this evening.
Thank you. Well, welcome all. It's nice to see everybody. We don't usually have these joint meetings, but it's kind of nice. Um, welcome to the joint meeting of the Cattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Cattati Community Redevelopment Agency and the Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Ms. Burgess, if you would kindly do a roll call for us?
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
I believe she's trying to log in in the other room.
Okay, I will come back to Commissioner Moore. Thank you. I will show Commissioner Rodriguez as absent. Vice Chair Lemus?
Here.
Chair Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. Thank you very much. So right now, this is really just a presentation, so I will open it up for public comment if we have any public comment on this particular issue.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I'm looking to our attendees tonight. If you have a public comment, please use your raised hand icon. If you're dialing in, you can also dial star nine. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you so much. And now I believe this will be turned over to our Community Development Director, Mr. House.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, members of the council and the commission and the public. Really appreciate everyone being here this evening for this special meeting, a little earlier than usual. As mentioned, my name is Noah House. I'm Community Development Director. Uh, and this will be the first meeting, uh, tonight's the first meeting in a year-long process to update the city's housing element, um, which talks about the goals, policies, and programs for the next eight years with regards to housing. Uh, the city was very fortunate to secure some excellent consulting services to assist with this venture, and the council approved these contracts at their last meeting on September 28th. Uh, Fourleaf will be leading the housing element update. Civic Edge will be leading the public engagement process, and RingCon will be doing the SEQA analysis necessary for the city to adopt, uh, and get the housing element certified. Um, it's worth noting that while we have these excellent consulting firms, uh, their staff that's joining them as, uh, and joining us that to do the work is local, uh, and we are joined this evening by Housing Guru's Jane Riley. Uh, I'm sure many of you have heard her name. She's been around Sonoma County housing circles for a long time. And Luke Lindenbush, uh, who will be doing the presentation this evening. I'll also be available for some questions and may chime in here or there, but it's pretty much going to be Luke leading the discussion. Uh, and we have a lot of material to cover over the next hour, and I want to leave time for your questions. So with that, I will turn it over to Luke. And I believe he has a PowerPoint that Lauren will be bringing up. And thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much, Noah, for that introduction and good evening, uh, council members and commissioners. It's great to be able to present you, uh, today. Um, as Noah mentioned, I am part of the team with Fourleaf, uh, presenter, which will be preparing the housing element, um, for the city of, uh, Cattati. Um, and, uh, joined tonight by our, our Director of Housing Policy, Jane Riley, and I, uh, work with Fourleaf as Housing Policy Planner. Um, so, uh, just want to clarify, um, just getting, we'll get all, get the share screen going here, um, and get this presentation started. Um, just want to clarify, um, that in addition to, uh, delivering the city's, uh, housing element, um, for the city, we are also, uh, coordinating a planning collaborative, the Napa-Sonoma Housing Collaborative. Um, with, uh, the, that covers the 16 jurisdictions in Napa and Sonoma counties. So the presentation that we'll be providing this evening, um, is actually, uh, part of the collaborative work, and I'll be going a little bit more into the details of that work, but, uh, in short, technical assistance provided, uh, to all of the jurisdictions, um, in Napa and Sonoma counties. We're really excited to be providing some of this technical assistance, especially to smaller jurisdictions like Cattati. Um, just going over a little agenda of, uh, the presentation tonight, um, I know you've had some great information from Myers-Nave and other, uh, panelists who have come forward to talk to you about housing law, so I'm not going to try to get too into the weeds about the details of the housing law, but just, oh, in general, want to give an overview of the housing element itself, um, talk a bit about site inventories, um, and other new laws as they affect the housing element process. Talk about some demographics specific to the city of Cattati and how they shape the housing need. Uh, and go over in general what the project timeline and next steps are going to be looking like over the next few years. Um, and have some time for the end for questions from council and commission discussion and, um, some community input as well.
Luke, can I stop you for just a second? Councilmember Harvey, did you have, uh, your hand raised or question?
Well, it looks like Commissioner Mo- Moore was trying to get in. She was on the attendees, but now she's dropped off again. I didn't know whether there was a problem getting her promoted, but now she's dropped off again.
She's back in.
I'm here.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks.
I was trying to get you back in.
Luke, thank you. Go ahead.
Excellent. No problem. Glad we're out here. Um, so just to go over what, what the housing element is, um, so it's a chapter of the general plan, and the housing element in short must include an inventory of developable sites, a review of constraints, both governmental and non-governmental, uh, how well you did on your last housing element, and also there are some new statutory requirements, uh, including affirmatively furthering fair housing, um, which looks at proactively preventing segregation patterns, uh, and making sure that, uh, there, there aren't, uh, low-income housing clustered in one particular portion of the city, things of, things of that sort. So just going over the, the broad overview of housing elements, um, just want to draw your attention to this first bullet point here, which is that state law mandates local governments to adequately plan to meet existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. And I think this is particularly important to bring up because oftentimes when we think about RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, we think about the number that is handed down from the state for the number of houses that we have to build. Um, and yes, that number is important and that's part of it, um, but there's also the nuances that are layered in of which income levels need to be planned for, um, for all types of housing, uh, not just single-family homes. And again, also looking at aspects like affirmatively furthering fair housing. So the housing element overall is a comprehensive and pretty complicated process, uh, that layers all these things in. Um, but I just want to give a general overview of, um, you know, how we can be helpful in delivering the housing element for, for the city of Cattati, and also where we can get some, some input here. Um, so, uh, the, the housing element is also unique among other, uh, elements of the general plan in that it is required to undergo review from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and that review is intensifying over years. Um, there's recent laws that have just been passed in recent weeks that, uh, enhance the regulatory authority of the state, uh, to make sure that in a jurisdiction circ compliant with the housing element and also doing everything they need to. Um, so for this housing element, we'll be going over the cycle from 2023 to 2031. But being certified is ultimately what is most important, um, and there are a lot of benefits to HCD certification and also a lot of consequences for jurisdictions um, if, uh, they don't meet, have a compliant housing element. Uh, so for one, um, jurisdictions without, uh, a compliant housing element can lose their ability to regulate land use decisions on a local level. Um, so if there are inadequate sites or if, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development deems it insufficient, um, then the discretionary review over how the city is zoned and how it meets the housing need, uh, then we'll go to the courts. Um, it's also really important just to have a certified housing element because it doesn't just affect housing funding, um, although that is very important, but it affects a wide range of state funding that the city of Cattati is eligible to receive, including parks, transit, bike lanes, pedestrian improvements, climate action improvements, uh, and the list just continues to grow over time. So now we're going to talk a little bit about the regional housing need allocation, which I know you've had some presentations on before, um, and you're probably well, um, versed in at this point. But RENA is ultimately, uh, the number that you get from the state, and it's also housing that you have to plan and zone for by come. Um, so cities zone for, for land, uh, have to zone for land at high enough densities that developers can work with, uh, the, the plan that is put forward. So uh, cities must zone for their fair share of the region's overall identified housing need, um, and, uh, the affordability assumptions are linked to density and zoning. So where does this number come from? Um, again, there's a really big number that comes from the state, and then it is, uh, funneled into the different jurisdictional authorities, uh, where the regional, uh, housing need determination results in the how, regional housing need allocation. So for the entirety of the Bay Area, um, this has been a huge increase over the last cycle from 187,000 to 441,000. Uh, and the Bay Area is also not distinct statewide in this large increase. Um, in fact, Southern California has actually increased to a greater degree than the Bay Area. But, um, nevertheless, the regional housing needs allocation, uh, is proportional based on population and other factors. Um, so this increase of almost 135% um, is reflective of the housing crisis, uh, the scale of, uh, the need to have adequate and bold action on housing, um, and once again is consistent with increases around the state. So just to give a glance of how this is shaken out in Sonoma County, uh, you can see that, uh, Cattati's, uh, allocation is pretty comparable to other small jurisdictions like Cloverdale and Sebastopol. Uh, and in general, for Sonoma County, uh, the unincorporated allocation is, was higher than anticipated and relatively high. So I just want to note the asterisk on the left that appeals could change these figures slightly. Uh, the city of Cattati, uh, did not submit an appeal on its regional housing needs allocation, so, uh, it's not going to go down. But if any of the other appeals submitted around the county, um, in particular the unincorporated one, if they're accepted, um, that could change those figures. Um, and it will be allocated proportionally. So you're not going to see an increase, uh, to the magnitude of hundreds for the city of Cattati, uh, but you might see a little bit. So from the RENA process, RHNA, RHND, then, uh, came the HMC, HCD, just to add to the acronyms here. Uh, but in short, the Housing Methodology Committee, um, of a, which, uh, our Director of Housing Policy, Jane Riley, sat on, uh, designed and recommended a methodology, uh, and the one that we're working with in this process, uh, was modeled after Planned Area 2050. Uh, so in, this is, uh, the time where we're going through the appeals and HCD is looking at the methodology, uh, or there, or the methodology has been approved, but, uh, looking at the appeals, looking at the final RENA allocation, which we can expect to see by the end of the year. Um, so once again, we can expect to see some RENA coming from the county, um, leading up to the housing element due date in 2023. So just another way to look at, uh, the process and where we're at. We're in this middle segment here, um, cities and counties updating the housing elements based on RENA. Um, and after this, we will, uh, be getting a certified housing element, uh, and keeping Cattati within the realm of local control and in the end of successful housing element process. So once again, uh, want to go a little bit into the new state housing laws. Uh, first, want to have a really big disclaimer on this, that I am not an attorney. Uh, and of course, the most important and best person to ask about how this will affect City of Cattati in general is the City Attorney of Cattati. Uh, but just want to give a little bit of an overview of what we're looking at in some, in terms of some of these sites. So some of them directly deal with the housing element itself, uh, and the process, uh, deadlines, things like that. And there are actually some here that have been, uh, taking place over the, over the last couple of weeks, including, uh, bringing the deadline from, from rezoning to from three years to one year, things like that. So some of them are more, uh, technical and procedural in nature. However, there are a handful of bills that have also, uh, just reshaped the regulatory landscape, uh, in terms of housing in California. And all of that will be factored in, whether it's, uh, looking at recent bills that have, uh, altered single-family zoning to allow for lot splits and, uh, building duplexes by right with SB nine, uh, or other bills, um, that had, that had occurred in the past, um, to that end, whether SB 50, SB 330. Um, so all of this, uh, has, builds, builds a picture of what we're working with the house, with the housing element, and, uh, we're working, uh, with Noah and, and staff and, and with city attorney and with, uh, our, our parlegal consultation as well to get an understanding of how this, uh, wide breadth of laws will, will impact the document that's developed over the next year or so. So one of these laws is AB 1397, um, and, uh, this is the sites inventory, um, which is the inventory of land that is suitable and available for development. Um, so AB 1397, uh, tightened up the process a little bit for how the housing element looks at which sites are available. Um, and it made sure that the sites that are non-vacant or unlikely to develop, um, aren't selected in, uh, recurring housing element updates. Uh, it strengthened, uh, the, the government code, uh, 65880, the predominant housing element law, um, which requires rezoning as well for a variety of housing types, not just for single-family zoning, but also for things such as duplexes, triplexes, missing middle housing, uh, homeless housing, uh, single residence occupancies, uh, and also ties in with affirmatively furthering fair housing laws to this end. Uh, so one downside of this is, or, or one, one aspect of this to consider is that the definition of vacant land is pretty strict. So if you have a parking lot, for example, that's not considered vacant land, just raw, um, you know, just completely undeveloped land, even if it's a, you know, dilapidated site, that wouldn't be considered vacant. That still can be considered in the housing element, uh, but there just needs to be justifiable reason that it should be used as a site. It can't be qualified as vacant. Um, additionally, on, on AB 1397, uh, once again, just requiring that strong justification if, if non-vacant sites are included in the inventory. Uh, and this was largely brought about because, um, the, and the reuse of sites was regulated, was brought about, um, in large part because they figured if you're, if you found a, a site, uh, on your housing element, the last cycle and the cycle before that, and it hasn't been built over 16 years, the likelihood, um, of, of that site being developed in the future has to be justified. Um, so we'll be getting into a little bit later in the presentation, some of the ways that we can be justifying that, um, go through the work of the collaborative and the work we're doing on the housing element for Cattati. So just going in again, uh, a bit to affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, so fair housing, this, this just requires the, the state of California and jurisdictions completing the housing element. To use a fair housing lens, uh, and make sure that housing sites are dispersed throughout the community. So once again, you're just not clustering all of your low-income housing, uh, or high-income housing in one particular area, um, it ensures that you zone for low and very low and moderate income housing in high opportunity areas, uh, and making sure that sites in low-income areas are accompanied by social programs, uh, to create strong communities. And just to table going over, uh, the housing sites inventory, uh, once again, uh, really just, just illustrating, uh, some of what I just went over in terms of how AB 1397, AB 686, uh, the sites inventory and affirmatively furthering for housing can intersect. So here's what happens, uh, with the sites and RENA. So as RENA gets astronomically bigger, sites ultimately get smaller, and this is really the, the crux of the biggest challenge in the housing element. So here is the, uh, an overview of some of the sites that were used on the last housing element for City of Cattati. Uh, so I'm sure you can recognize that some of these, uh, will not be able to be used for pretty, you know, clear reasons, such as the, the most, the most obvious reason that, uh, a housing site cannot be, uh, reused in housing element is simply that it's been built. Uh, whether it's been built for housing and it's no longer an eligible site for redevelopment, or whether it's been developed for a different use, um, either of those would, uh, disqualify a site from being reused. Um, there, again, and other requirements, uh, that, uh, may have allowed a site to be eligible in the last plan, uh, might not apply for this one. So uh, just an overview of the sites that the city of Cattati is looking at, um, some of these will be reused and some of them will not. So I want to go a little bit into the no net loss law. Uh, so agencies, um, have to replace, uh, the site, uh, any site in the inventory with low-income housing if it, if it develops into anything else. Um, this, uh, uh, essentially, we're, the no net loss law, the goal of it is to make sure that, um, housing sites are, are not, uh, diminishing. So, uh, essentially, um, if, so with the, with the no net loss, sorry, just lost my train of thought a bit here. So with the no net loss law, um, it's always good to overshoot it a bit because basically this law, um, says that if, uh, um, this, the, if, sorry. If, uh, if, uh, um, it, basically, if a, the site is re- rezoned, um, from your list, uh, and it is off of your list, um, then you have a shortened timeline, uh, to be able to replace that in your list. So it's important, um, if, uh, you know, a site, for example, um, becomes unavailable within the next eight years, that you have a replacement for that. Uh, so the recommendation here, uh, is to not just go for 100% of what the RENA is. Uh, the recommendation is usually to go to about 130%, just to allow for some flexibility and accommodation, uh, in the event that sites are unavailable. Um, so this allows local control to be retained, make sure that if you dip below that 100% um, of, uh, the, of, of the, the RENA requirement for your housing element, uh, that you're going to be able to have a backup plan to deliver those sites. So I also want to go into a bit, uh, the AB 72 and AB 215, um, the expanded enforcement authority, uh, and really, uh, what this means for the housing element law. So, uh, HCD has more authority in this cycle than they ever had, um, to be able to make sure that housing elements are compliant. Uh, and also, uh, there is a little bit more teeth in this law, um, for, uh, the jurisdictional authority of the Attorney General, uh, to be referred cases from, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, for any violations, uh, on this list. Originally, it, it included, um, things such as the Housing Accountability Act, no net loss law, the density bonus law and anti-discrimination laws. Uh, but this also now requires cities to rezone for housing sites within one year if they, uh, need to outsize, uh, rezone them, uh, and additional, uh, uh, expanded enforcement authority for jurisdictions not complying, applying with SB 35, the streamlined zoning, or affirmatively furthering fair housing in the sites inventory. So this is super important, public participation. Of course, uh, there's the statutory requirement, um, that the local government has to make, uh, a thorough effort to, uh, have, have, uh, as many, uh, segments of the population involved in the housing element process. Um, and, and beyond that, it's also just a good thing to do to make sure that you have the best, uh, housing element possible that is most representative of the community of Cattati. So just once again, go back into affirmatively furthering for housing, since this is a complex topic, um, started off as a federal program reinforced by a state program. And just wanted to make sure that, that we have an understanding that it's not just how many new units a community needs, but also where they are built and who will have, have access to them. Um, so this is really a comprehensive lens to be able to look at the housing element process, uh, and make and making sure that the City of Katari is delivering on its obligation to serve every member of its community. So in terms of the requirements, the housing element also requires an analysis of affirmatively furthering fair housing to identify patterns of segregation, racial or ethnic concentration that may exist, and identify policies and programs to either reverse these or prevent them from happening in the future. So just going a little bit over ministerial approval, there have been a handful of laws, including SB thirty-five, as I mentioned, that allows for ministerial review of housing projects if it includes an affordable component. So that's for multifamily residential. There's also new laws, as I mentioned, SB nine could allow for lot splits and duplexes on those lots and single-family zones. And all of this, again, is streamlined, it's by right, it's done on a mere ministerial level. So there's not a public review process that the planning commissioner, the city council. So it is important that jurisdictions adopt objective design and development standards by the first of the year, which I understand Katari is well attracted to doing, has not already been done. So pivoting from some of the laws, and again, I know that's a lot, but Jane is online to be able to answer questions after the presentation and about any of the laws or the housing element process in general. But I just want to go into some demographics that illustrate the City of Katari. So as we see population trends throughout Sonoma County and the Bay Area as a whole, Katari has either been, has been roughly in line without population trends and in general outpaced the Bay Area. And in population age trends, we can see that consistent with jurisdictions across the county and across the region, we have an aging population, which has distinct challenges and distinct needs that may be considered in the housing element process, how to take care of an aging population. And the City of Katari is also unique in the county of Sonoma, in which many jurisdictions have a reducing population of children. But over the last ten years, Katari has had an increasing population of children, showing that Katari is a good place for families as well. In terms of housing tenure, you can see there's a handful of varieties. An owner occupied represented in the blue and renter occupied represented in the green here, showing that in general, larger households are more likely to be renter occupied. And housing tenure by age, showing that it's harder to own a home if you're younger. And again, no surprises here, but an increasing likelihood of homeownership for people between the ages of forty-five and seventy-five. And looking at household income level by tenure as well, the clear takeaway here, again, if you make more than a hundred percent of area median income, it's going to be a lot easier for you to buy a house as represented by the income levels here and homeownership in the blue bars. And households by tenure, we also see that Katari has slightly more owner occupied units than the Bay Area as a whole, but slightly less than Sonoma County. In terms of household size, Katari is also pretty consistent with the rest of Sonoma County and the Bay Area in terms of number of people in homes. And in terms of cost burden by race, there's a handful of statistics here that just illustrate the wide gradient of cost burden and even showing that a large amount of people who are making moderate and above moderate incomes still are burdened by the cost of housing. And just to clarify where that threshold is, above thirty percent is considered a cost burden in terms of housing. So disability is a huge factor in terms of considering housing needs. This is specifically looking at disability seniors, those with an ambulatory difficulty, independent living difficulty, hearing difficulty, cognitive difficulty, self-care difficulty and vision difficulty. All of these have really different challenges and different needs that arise when we're looking at how to address these populations. So going into a bit of the housing element needs, just a general overview of the project itself, the goal here is to meet local housing needs. So we want to develop a plan that is best for Katari itself. So the goal here is to cater programs and policies to the community needs. And that's really where the planning commission, the city council and members of the public come in to bring the creativity and the vision for what this document can look like, not just to meet all the statutory objectives as mandated by the state, but to create a plan that is really best for the City of Katari as a whole. And really, a lot of what our work is the more, is the more technical side of things, ensuring adequate sites, looking at the inventory of sites to make sure that you don't have arena mismatch, and looking into creative policies that can allow a broader range of site options and look once again through all the site locations and the plan itself through any of those lens. So you can achieve state certification. So the next steps from here, we're going to have outreach and community input ongoing through many steps of the process, data collection as we go. Then after this, we'll see the draft housing strategy and preliminary sites inventory, go into the fair housing analysis and the affirmatively furthering fair housing program of actions. And then we'll have a draft housing element and HCD review. So just looking at this in a timeline form, we're here at the kickoff workshop and every plum-colored dot is an opportunity for community input. So pretty much every step of the process, we have opportunity for community input to make sure that every voice is being heard in this process. And as Noah mentioned, this housing element for the City of Katari is being delivered and prepared by three separate consultants, the Civic Edge, as if for leaf on the housing element preparation, and the Sequoie documentation will be done by Ringcon Consultants. So just some of the ways that Forleaf and Civic Edge will be coordinating will be looking overall at the feedback from the community to make sure that it informs our housing strategy, the policies and programs therein, looking at community input on sites, you know, considering really which sites are most feasible and how we can consider them into the process, looking at stakeholder interviews and community surveys to identify constraints and housing needs within the community. And making sure as well that the outreach is done multilingual, that there are clear, accessible and culturally competent messaging as well, and doing everything, once again, that we can to meet the HCD standard for housing element. So I just want to go a little bit more into the NAPSA Subregional Housing Collaborative that I had mentioned at the beginning, which is being led by Forleaf in sixteen jurisdictions across the two counties. We're a subregional, it's a subregional technical assistance program that is funded by the Association of Bay Area Governments, the nine-county regional government. So the cities don't have to pay for it at all. And it's funded by a regional early action planning grant, which is just north of two hundred million dollars from the state to encourage regional collaboration on housing policy issues. So with this, we'll also be having a regional fair housing analysis conducted by the Lawyers Committee for Housing with an affirmatively furthering fair housing section for each city. We'll also be working with an equity working group across the two counties to make sure that we are really doing that hard, reaching hard-to-reach communities and doing the most effective outreach that we can for the most equitable documents across the jurisdictions. And we'll also have a developer panel to validate sites. So when I mentioned those sites that are not vacant, but need reasonable justification to show that they are likely to be developed, that's where that developer panel comes in. So if there's a site that, you know, might have a parking lot on it, might have something on it, and we have a need to gauge developer interest to make sure that it's actually a viable parcel for the housing element, the developer panel will be able to do that, so there's no guesswork as to whether or not HCD will accept any of those sites. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions, discussion and any further public input. Thank you so much.
Luke, thank you very much. I will look to see if there's any hands or any questions. Not seeing any of them, I do. Commissioner Murphy?
Thanks, Luke, for that presentation. That was really thorough. One of the things that stood out to me was just the abundance of opportunity for the community to provide feedback. I was wondering if you could help me understand more about what sort of feedback the community can provide that has an impact. I know we're talking a lot about various laws that sort of dictate and help guide us on how we need to develop our housing element. And so as a community member, I'd like to know what sort of feedback I can provide that would be impactful to how we move forward.
I'll turn it over to Jane to answer the bulk of our questions.
Really quick, Chair Murphy, I just chime in on that, from my standpoint, and I asked Luke and Jane to include the housing site selection graphic, because that's going to be critical in showing where we're prioritizing what types of housing development. And so, you know, rather than have folks get frustrated when a specific project comes forward to build next door to them, I really want to engage with people early and often to say, hey, we need to provide this variety of housing types and these are the locations that we think are suitable. Let us know your opinion on that. That's one thing I'm specifically looking for. And then Jane, I'm interested in hearing what else you want to add to that.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Jane Riley Forleaf, excuse me. One of the first things that we want from the community is we want to know what the housing issues are. We want to hear people's stories about when they've had a hard time achieving housing or if they've had a hard time being able to afford the place they're at and so on. So we want to hear all those things, all the issues that are related to housing. And then we also want to hear from community members what they see as the unique opportunities that are available in Katari. And maybe it's something around students and maybe it's something around backyard dwellings and it could be anything. That's the kind of thing that we want to hear about. And from that initial survey, which we actually have coming out very soon, Noah's already done a couple of surveys, so we've already got some information coming in. But we're a little flexible in our approach of what we want to hear from people because it depends on what people are telling us and where we need to dive in more. So I'm not going to outline exactly what we want to hear from people yet, but we do want their personal stories and we want to hear their issues and we want to hear what opportunities they think there are. People, your community, you're going to find are so incredibly creative. They're going to come up with ideas that you would have never dreamed of. And people are remarkable doing that. They think about this. Housing is a big deal to most of your community. So I'm really excited to get that going. And as Noah indicated, the sites thing is going to be, is going to be big. I don't think it's going to be a huge difficulty here, but I think it's going to have to have community buy-in in order to get through the process at the end and achieve state certification.
Thank you, Jane. Chair Murphy, did you have anything further?
No, thank you. I appreciate that information.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question on properties that had been basically had, or zoned for commercial, maybe mixed use, and they've been sold over and over again, they've never been developed. In particular, I'm looking at the property that was just done downtown. And so you were saying that there was eight years of, and then, and then they need to be built on. So I'm just kind of curious on, we have properties that have had multiple, multiple developments approved on there, but they've never been built. So I just kind of want to read on that because there's many properties in Katari like that.
Right, absolutely agree. So what Luke was talking about is the new requirement about sites that have been in a previous inventory. So a vacant site that was in your two housing elements ago and was in the last one, you can't use it again because it's assumed to be not really a good site unless you have some kind of a justification. And one of those justifications can be that people are interested enough in developing the site that they bring in applications. So the fact that you've had repeated approvals on a site and it's probably the market that's the problem, that could qualify the site to be in the next round. On the other hand, we have to look at why those approvals haven't been getting, haven't been getting through. And we do that with an analysis of constraints. So we'll be looking at what it is that will be talking developers and we'll be asking what it is that's keeping them from doing the housing. And it might be financing and it might be, you know, purely personal reasons. It might be things that are out of the city's control, might be hookup fees, I don't know, but we're going to find out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you. I'd like to follow on on that. We have a handful of people that own property that, as was pointed out by Commissioner Moore, it's been entitled and it never gets built for decades. And we get all kinds of excuses as to why it's never built, but we just happen to have a tendency of some developers to just sit on it until they can make what they want to make. So what do we do about that? Because some of it is really, you know, prime property, you know, for instance, there's properties by our train station, but they just sit on it and sit on it and sit on it. What are our options?
Boy, those are good questions. And just to help, to help make that point, a few years ago, there was an analysis done by the county and its cities of all the, of all the approved but not built projects that we had stacked up over the last year. And it was like a hundred thousand units for the county and all of its cities. It's just insanity. But we use that to prove to the state that it's not us, right? We're writing the laws right, we're approving the housing units, they're just not getting built, so it's the market, it's not us. So absolutely, that's happening. When it's a subdivision, there's not much you can do because the state continues to extend those tentative maps on subdivisions. When it is a different kind of approval, like a use permit, design review, there's, there are end dates and at some point, it's going to run out of entitlement unless it's, unless it's a subdivision or the entitlements are tied to the subdivision. Noah will jump in.
I just wanted to add, Councilmember Harvey, that one of the things I really prioritized with this housing element and I've talked to the Forleaf staff about it, is doing some financial analysis to really look to what the true costs of construction are in Sonoma County. So that way, we have the ability to have some informed feedback and information when, you know, developers say, you know, project won't pencil except in X, Y, Z circumstances, that are asking for certain concessions. We want to be informed on what benefits can be provided by what concessions or what the true impacts of the labor issues are or the supply chain issues, cost of construction materials, those types of things. So we have asked Forleaf to include that in their scope. That's been included and will be provided, whether it's through Forleaf in our direct contract or through the housing collaborative work. And I just, I do want to give credit to ABAG MTC and also thank again Forleaf for jumping on because I do think it's a really good opportunity for us to have the same consultants doing our housing element under our contract that are working regionally with all the other jurisdictions of the city through some funding provided by ABAG MTC. And I volunteered to sit on the subcommittee for that group in order to kind of keep tabs and hopefully be able to leverage some economies of scale and really get the biggest bang for our buck here in Katari.
So Noah, along those lines, we talk about, you know, the different levels of affordability and it seems like most of the time, at most, all we can get developers to do is the moderate and we're left with the low and very low. What tools in a toolbox where those numbers are forced upon us that we can make developers do those? Because they just choose then to not develop.
Yeah, so absolutely. And this is, I think, this is, you hit the nail on the head with one of the most critical things that I hope to come out of that analysis is, okay, what is the true cost of a very low-income unit in these various types of projects? How does that affect the pro forma as compared to a pure market rate project? And then what tools do we have as a city that we might be able to help? And we've talked about some of these things over the last year, maybe deferring the collection of impact fees to occupancy rather than issuance of a building permit, so that way more of the construction loan can go towards building the actual project and then they can pay the impact fees when they convert it to more long-term financing. Potentially, one of the ideas I've talked about with the city manager, and you know, I don't want to get too far ahead of anybody, but maybe potentially using some of our affordable housing money to even subsidize, you know, from the Affordable Housing Fund, even subsidize maybe some of the impact fees on the very low-income units. But we have to get creative in thinking about how we might be able to fund some of those units. units and and make them be able to at least minimize how much they drag down the pro formas of these projects. And then that way, we can get all of the benefits of having the housing built, not just the market rate and the moderates, but the low and very low. And we will be looking for those opportunities.
Okay, and my last question has to do with, you know, it's great that we're going to get community input. And I like your idea, Noah, about getting it upfront. But the projects that we have seen, we do get audiences, and they're very opinionated as I don't know if you've been on on many of them, but how do we set those expectations with the community? Because we get a lot of, you know, we want Katati to remain small. How do we set that expectation? I would hate to have people come out and we're going to say, well, we want your input. We're going to do this. And then say, well, forget it, because we're restricted by these laws, and you only wanted 10 units. Guess what? You're getting 50 next to you. How do we set that expectation?
That's that's a really good question, and it's something that that we do need to talk about early. It's a lot of its messaging and it's messaging early. What does it mean if the site next to you is on the housing inventory list? What does it mean? It doesn't mean that it's required to develop that way. It will always be up to the property owner what they want to do with that property within the constraints of zoning. It just because we assigned it, let's say, forty-nine low-income units, doesn't mean it's doesn't mean that it's slated to be developed that way. Reno is a zoning exercise, and local jurisdictions aren't required to build the housing. You know, the thought is, as Luke mentioned, they want to put everything in place so that a developer can come in, and it would be feasible for them to build the housing. So it's a lot of a lot of talking upfront, and I mean, this needs to be done across the board. Every we have to have similar talking points. We all have to be saying the same thing about what it means to be on the list, that it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be developed with affordable housing. We are not required to build that much housing. We're required to demonstrate to the state that we have enough land zoned for that housing if a developer were to come in and build it. So I think just backing away from that fear that the city's telling me what's going to go on my property or what's going to go next to my property. I think backing away from that fear with a little truth telling before the bad information comes out is is really important. And organized groups will try to spread bad information. So it's important to get the messaging out there early and often.
And I would just add, I would just add, letting people know, you know, what the problems are that we've that we come to or realize through our analysis, and then show what we're trying to solve for, you know, and a lot of while I absolutely understand some people have certain expectations. I think just letting people know what could happen and what the process will be when there's not an actual project proposed next door is the best thing we can do. We need to bring everyone into the tent to help come up with ideas and solve the problem for the whole community.
Right, but it's going to be important to set that expectation, you know, up front with folks, because if they think they gave you input, and they think that their input said one thing, and we do something else, that's where that's where it gets dicey.
I completely understand, this, Councilmember Harvey, I've
Yeah.
One of the things I used to do at neighborhood meetings, and by the way, one of the things we're going to instill is a neighborhood meeting requirement, which we've already been doing, but it's not codified yet. Before any big project could come in, we'd have to have a meeting with all the direct neighbors and the developer to talk about it before they even file. But
That's great.
But one of the things I used to always say is, you know, okay, here's the project, and folks would say, well, I don't want I don't want anything built next door. And I totally hear that. And I'm taking notes on that, but the general plan says this, and the zoning code says that. So if something is going to be built, what are your concerns about it? Because there's some type of base property rights that go with these zoning districts. And and we it is important to me to communicate that clearly and unequivocally.
And that you you hit it right on, and that's what we need to tell people, that they can't tell someone next to them that they are not able to do something with the property they own.
If I can jump back in really quick on public input and how we incorporate it into the housing element, you know, they give us input, and then we don't use it. We are required to track all of the public input and then say how we incorporated that into the housing element, or if we didn't, why we didn't. So what when people give us input, they will be able to go back and see why it was why it wasn't incorporated, or if it was where it was.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
I just want to remind you, the remaining attendees and participants, we have a six o'clock council meeting, so I've got three hands up, and I've got Commissioner Hancock. Go ahead.
Yes, hello. I agree with the sort of comments about the the public side. Question there, how to get that input, but the specific one on how to make it for any disability or aging type housing. What we've seen at the moment is that it's getting pushed out onto a remote part of the city for for people who are aging, and then they're surrounded by traffic. They can't actually walk anywhere. So do we have a way of actually saying that if you have, if we're looking at any housing for people who are disabled of some sort, that it's going to have the services easily available around it? How do we phrase that?
Well, we'll certainly work on that with our with our policies and programs, and hopefully we'll get some input that's really focused on that. If it's one of your priorities to have to have that housing in a in a centralized part of town, or at least have that selection available for aging people or people with disabilities, then that's something that we can write in. It's probably a good idea to have that housing dispersed throughout the community so that people have choices, and also because it's a part of affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. Thanks for the helpful presentation and question. Just a quick question. Also, I'm worried about the the no reusing sites issue and justifying. So we are not one of those cities that puts unbailable sites on the list in hopes to prevent development. We put real sites where we really want to see diverse housing. And so so we think most of the sites I imagine that are on the current map are in fact viable sites. Does that developer panel that looks at non-vacant land, might they also have a role to play in justifying reuse of sites?
Yeah, absolutely. We can include those sites as well.
Thanks. And one other comment, in the presentation, the numbers on the population age trends graph don't match the bars at all. And so I don't know which to believe, the numbers or the or the bar. So if at some point you could get us a corrected version of that one slide, I'd appreciate it because I'm curious about that change.
Which slide was that?
The population age trends.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Lemus.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I had a question about the Equity Working Group that's going to be formed. I have questions about how you identified members. Is it geographically represented? And what activities or how will they engage the community? What are the plans for them?
I hope we can call you on that. So this is just started out, and we have we've posted to our steering committee of the of the collaborative, and Noah is one of our steering committee members. So we've posed the idea of doing that. We've gotten buy-in that we will form an equity working group and kind of what the role is, but it's pretty loose. And we still have to come up with the criteria and the how much the stipend is and what the what the length of service would be and how many hours we're talking about and what the role is. But the thought is that we're going to use our Equity Working Group, which might be, we're probably going to be piggybacking on someone else's, right? Because there's only so many people that can serve in Equity Working Groups. The the thought is that we will use them as ambassadors to do outreach and equip them with kits so that we can get the personal stories and the the real needs and get the outreach and and input from our hardest-to-reach communities to inform all of our housing elements. But if if we could reach out to you for some help in how that should be put together, I would really appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, I might have some ideas on some local groups, but I think it needs to be geographically kind of represented, especially I'm not sure. You had mentioned that this is part of the Napa Sonoma, or is it going to be Katati? Doesn't it be separate or?
It's the nap. It's part of the Napa Sonoma Collaborative.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
We do need Katati-specific representation and participation. So we're trying to cast the broad net, but we know that a lot of you folks have your fingers on the pulse of the community and these groups that we need to chat with. And so we definitely want to leverage your resources to help us make sure we meet those needs.
Well said.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I appreciated the comments earlier about needing to make sure we set expectations for community members who are providing input. And one thing that's on my mind is, how do we make sure that we're getting balanced input from people who maybe aren't necessarily always plugged in to what's going on with the city? Because I think there's a huge need for housing and a huge number of people in Katati who do want more housing to be built and don't want to just avoid construction of housing, who who recognize because of their lived experience that housing is a crisis right now. So how do we, how, what is the plan to reach out to underrepresented communities and low-income people to make sure that input's coming in as well?
Boy, that's that's a great question. And I have a term for for that. I I try to avoid the STPs. Those are the same ten people who are the ones who know how to show up in city council meetings and know how to talk and know how to get what they want, and they don't necessarily represent the larger population, right? So it's really important when we do our outreach that we are able to invite participation with something as simple as a cell phone so that everyone can do it. And we don't, we don't just outreach through the normal channels. Sometimes we'll put QR codes on buses so that people can scan them and take a survey on a bus. Sometimes we'll do text-back questions. We will almost always do pop-ups. And sometimes in work areas, sometimes laundromats are a great place to go and survey people that wouldn't normally be showing up at at city council meetings. So we have lots of different approaches, and the the expectation from HCD to make a diligent effort is is really serious, and they want you to track the composition of your community, and then who's showing up and participating demographically. Are you reaching that cross-section that's representative of your community? So it's it's the diligent effort is taken very seriously. We're not always able to get all of the input from the underrepresented parts of the community that we want, which is why through the collaborative, we are going to be providing some some stipends so that people who would otherwise need to work during the time that we're meeting will be able to participate and at least get paid for their time. So we're doing those kinds of things, but it is a challenge, and we need all the help that we can get.
Thank you very much for that response. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was looking back at page forty at the bullet of suggesting looking for more creative policies to allow a broader range of site options. I started thinking what those could be, where they generally lead. And I started thinking it would largely probably be a continued general diminution of current zoning, a general push to higher density. And I started to wonder, in a community like ours, which is to some degree, built out, rather small, always been small, and the difficulty for us, it is a true value here. This is something that I don't care what side of the political aisle you are on in this community, if you live in a small apartment or big house, everybody likes that this is a small town. So how do we deal with this? How does this work in the long term? We have a community like this, but numbers continue to go up year after year. I I see the process eventually forcing this community to change into something that I honestly believe from my years of living here and years of representing it, that the grateful would be very concerned about. One, does forced growth become intangible? I'll just say, I think, two things. I think my colleague, Councilmember Harvey, nailed it when she talked about the stories. Because I think the stories you hear, if you really talk to the unplugged people in Katati, the average working people that fill most of our neighborhoods, would be they would be very unhappy with this. They don't even realize the ramifications of one site due to SB nine becoming potentially up to six separate residences between extra units and splitting of the individual houses. And lastly, we talk about solving the problem for the community through discussion. But due to the rules, and I see this only goes one way. It only solves one way. So we're not really giving anybody much options other than what we're pushing. I I have some discomfort listening to the process that's being put forward, that it's not going to really hear the voice of most Katadians, but it will miss this larger group. You're willing to reply to that. I know I've used most of the time. We only have a few minutes left, but those are the concerns I have. I think they're concerns of our community. Any suggestions how this process is supposed to work in the long term in a community like Katati, which certainly isn't San Jose or San Francisco? I'd be interested in hearing because I don't see how it does. I think it's intangible.
Well, I think I think you've hit on a lot of points that are worthy of a much larger discussion than what we're we're doing here today, just what 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 the state is assigning us, the fact that we're losing population, not gaining population, but we're still getting these big numbers. But what I want you guys to focus on is what your community wants and your community needs, and let us work. Let us do the backend work about fitting that into the legislative requirements. I want you guys to to listen and guide programs towards those that fulfill the needs of your community. Let's take for an example, density bonuses. We've had, we have people with disabilities and aging people. What if we, what if Katati had a density bonus program that went beyond what the state requires you to do? And says, okay, instead of this eight density bonus program, you can get this bigger density bonus if you give us units that are work for seniors, disabled people, and these two other needs that you've identified. So you really focus the programs towards what your specified and identified community needs are. And I hope I hope to change your mind, and I hope make you more hopeful as this process goes on.
And I do think, and I'll end it at this because we've got two minutes, but Jane, I do think that is creative in good-thinking policy on one level, but on the other level, it also underscores my concerns or where this community is going to be concerned about. It's generally increasing even further beyond the huge mandates of increases that the state's already put on this small community. So that's the basic prop. That's the elephant in the room, and the state, the discussion of this and the way this process is set up, there's no ability for them to assess individual places. If it is one size fits all, it would be great.
Vice Mayor Lemon, I would just chime in. So my goal is is and my hope is that we can take some of the work that we've done with the downtown specific plan and the Santero Way area and and leverage the sites we've already identified as a community as appropriate for some of our development and utilize those and may really focus on getting those incorporated through the reuse process if we need to other sites. I I think we're going to be able to be successful with putting the growth where the community's already said we want to do it. And again, as Jane mentioned, we'll rely on their expertise and their knowledge to get the our goals to line up with HCD mandated requirements and still meet the expectations of the community. I I'm very, very confident we're going to be able to do it.
And I have every confidence in you, Noah, and I do believe in the short term, we can have success with some of this, although to say that the community supports the areas we've already, we've done it as a council. We talked about a decade ago. I don't think most people know it. But I still think that can work. What I'm talking about, and I'll leave everybody with this thought, as the process exists now and the way it escalates every year, what happens when we get past that? I don't see that working. So that's the thought I wanted to leave us with, appropriately negative as we go to one more meeting, so apologies for that. But thank you for the discussion and the input from both of you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks, did you have one more thought or something come up?
No, I we're out of time, so let's move on.
Okay. I want to thank all the commissioners. Chair Murphy, Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Lemus, Commissioner Moore, thank you all for participating. Thank you, Noah, Ms. Riley, and Mr. Lindenbusch. Thank you very much for that presentation. There's a lot of information and a lot to absorb, so I'm sure we'll be working on this for years to come.
Thank you. We'll see you soon.
Okay, bye-bye. So with that, I will adjourn this joint meeting.